Can't hear you.
There, yeah, okay, we're using. Okay, so just.
Okay.
All right, let me just pull up the agenda real quick. All right. We call the meeting to order at 3:01 on September 10, 2020. At this time, we'll do a roll call. So I'll start with myself, Joe Semolus.
Laura Francis.
Beverly, you there?
Oh, yeah, Beverly Lawrence, I thought it was unmute.
That's all right, excellent. We have Joe Comerford, Joe, any other staff you want to announce, present?
We have Helena McLeady, Lisa Gibson, who is taking our minutes, and Jared Wickham.
Excellent. All right, moving on, item number three, correspondence. Do we want to? Do we have anything to speak about in terms of correspondence?
Yeah, so we sent it out yesterday. We had the closeout letter on the NTD, which just says that our NTD was closed, and there's no outstanding issues or concerns. And now we get to start 2020, so it never really ends. And then the bigger thing was the letter from the commissioner. And hopefully everyone had a chance to read that. There's basically just a general letter of support, which is what the staff felt was needed to get everyone at DOT moving and getting us the resources we need to implement the study goals. So there were a few specifics, like purchasing the property, which I was glad to see. I didn't think it would even be that specific, but it was good to see that they did specifically identify purchasing property. So that's been one of our challenges, but we'll talk more of that later.
Excellent. All right, moving on to the next thing on the agenda. You have minutes and accepting the minutes of June 11, 2020. Is there a motion to accept the minutes?
A motion to accept the June 11 and June 30 minutes?
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, all right, any, well, there's no one else, so we'll move on to item 4B, acceptance of minutes from June 30, 2020, meeting. Is there a motion to?
I did it, I said.
Yeah, she combined them.
Oh, you did, okay, thank you. We'll move on, reports, administrators' report.
All right, so I did send it in advance, so I won't go too detailed. I was kind of hit the highlights. We submitted an application for almost $2.3 million in capital to FTA. And that includes the remainder of the money needed to do terminal renovations. So that's been a big part of why the project hasn't moved forward is we didn't have nearly enough funding. So this should fully fund it. There's eight dollar buses, two-way radio upgrades, facility maintenance funding, and then the rest is facility, sorry, miscellaneous capital items. And it's just on hold because even though we already have one application with funding for this terminal renovation that went through no problem, FTA this time said, well, the terminal is adjacent to a historic historic zone, and so the state has to approve, either approve the design or approve that you don't have to have any design approval. We are, DOT is helping us with that because they deal with that agency.
Oh, so Joe, I do have a question. So wasn't there money already for the terminal?
There was, it was only like, it was less than half a million. So it wasn't nearly enough to actually do the project. But what's odd is that you would have thought that at that time FTA would have said this, since it was in the, clearly in the grant.
Yes.
Same thing, but they did not, when it was done in 2016's grant, it wasn't caught by them, and this time it was, so I can't see the whole thing until that's done. So I'm hoping we'll get that done soon and.
Is the, the terminal renovations, is that all interior work for the most part?
It is, pretty much. Besides, with exteriors, minor, it's like mechanical items on the exterior of the building. It's not any changes to the exterior of the building.
So DOT will.
Parking area.
Yeah, they'll do like an environmental assessment and send it to SHPO for review. And since you're not modifying the building, really, you should be fine.
And the building's been around there for 18 years or something?
Since 1980.
1980, okay.
And they acknowledge it's not actually in the historic zone, it's adjacent to it, so.
What does that mean?
It means it's not on a federal, the property itself is not federally recognized as a historic structure.
Oh, okay.
It's that it being adjacent to a historic designated zone or district, which also downtown is, it could be considered a contributing factor in the future to that district. It being only, you know, from the 1980s, it doesn't even meet the threshold of a historic building. Therefore, it won't rise to that level. So they'll do a quick environmental assessment to determine if there's any impact to the associated historic district, which there won't be.
Oh, okay.
If you know anybody, any contacts that might move along quicker than DOT can move along.
Yeah, I mean, really, it's SHPO, SHPO will review the project. So I think once you have your projects open, you know, scope materials, then once, I assume you're going to have to submit the DOT for review. Once that's done, then they'll want to have it signed off by SHPO. And I could call SHPO at that time and have a couple of my colleagues expedite it, hopefully.
Okay. We did receive our operating funding for '21, just about three weeks ago. I got that, it's flat from FY20, except in the rural, there was some CARRIS money. And we gave out our first safety awards this week.
Awesome.
First approved last year for this current year, but then also into our contract.
Especially during this time, I mean, we should give as many kudos as possible during, you know, COVID.
Yeah, it's not a lot of money, but it's a recognition.
Yeah, no, that's, that's good, that's good.
How many, how many got a safety award?
Nine.
Oh, okay, that's good.
Continue to work on capital projects. Probably the biggest one, surprisingly, has been our IT upgrades, that has been very, very time consuming. We've pretty much redone everything because all of it was time to redo. From our servers to PCs to firewalls to wireless access points. We've done it all. And we now have, we had two sites that were really kind of independent. You had a VPN back and forth from Main Street to the garage. So now we have one server and everything's down at 91 North Main, so everything is secure. They've been finding the past, if the terminal was not secure, the server. Everything's on the backup generator now. And the two sites are on a point-to-point network, so they operate much more like we're in one building, no matter which building we're in. So it's already running a lot smoother, there's a few things left to migrate over. And we hope to have that done shortly. And part of this project, too, has been we added public Wi-Fi to the terminal. They were setting that up today. And there'll be no password anything, it's just a splash page. And they got to agree to our terms and conditions, and then they'll, they'll get Wi-Fi. We get asked about it all the time, so we wanted to provide that. And we got.
Joe, Joe, can I ask a question? What kind of protection does that give us when you're asking for people to approve to our, to conditions?
Oh, we're not a lot, because they still. But what we've done is, it's, so it's separate, totally separate network, obviously. It's not within our network. The equipment we bought is designed specifically to have a public-facing Wi-Fi that's totally separate. And it allows us to change how much bandwidth they get. So we are really limiting the amount of bandwidth that we're giving to the public so that they really won't be able to do any streaming.
Oh, okay.
On our content filters. So we're also filtering out contents, you can't have, you know, the obvious stuff we would have been doing out in the lobby. So it's really just, the point is, check your email, do stuff like that, but you're not streaming videos. We're limiting it to 10 megs for the entire public. They all have to share 10 megs. So that's kind of how we're really doing it is.
Okay. Thanks.
In essence, when, when the terminals fall, it isn't going to do, it isn't going to work too well.
Right, yeah, as I said, the point's really just, check your emails, do stuff like that. We don't want people streaming things. Not only might they, you know, the obvious problems of people possibly watching inappropriate videos, but we don't want them eating up our Wi-Fi either.
Right.
We want to keep our bandwidth up for the things we need to do because it is coming out of our bandwidth. So we don't want them having too much, but we want to be able to provide the service, because a lot of people have limited data plans. Don't want to use up all their data while waiting for the box.
Got it.
It does love both. So we've got our new phones all up and running. Our new SUV arrived for our supervisors, you can see that there. It's getting lights installed, hopefully next week, you know, for when we have to do road calls, something like that. And we're repairing a lot of items here at the garage and over at the terminal.
Joe, can I ask, is that a electric vehicle or a gas?
It's gas. Yeah, we don't have, we would have to, you know, set up all the electrical plugins if we were going to do electric. And while future large bus orders will be all electric based on the way the state's moving. Right now, we're just not, you know, set up to do electrical charging.
So here's the deal.
And you guys have room there, when I order there. And then on maintenance, we've done a lot, you'll see that in the finance report. Just catching up, again, still catching up on maintenance, but I think we're pretty much caught up. And we're seeing, definitely seeing improvements now. We are, we lost employees that had been trained on our maintenance software. So we got two more employees trained on that, and they are now utilizing it daily. And we tied in our electric DVI system to our maintenance software. So it all comes right into there, whatever the drivers report gets emailed to us. First of all, if they report a defect, we get an email right away saying there's a defect. And we could check on it right away if we need to. And then it comes into our maintenance software, we generate a work order, and then we notify our maintenance contractor. We've got Gen Fair, which is our fare box provider. We're working with them to schedule a full maintenance of every fare box. Unfortunately, what they did tell me is they're 2006s, and it's probably time to replace them. So that's probably going to be a next year project. But right now, we're at least trying to get them all working properly in time for when we start collecting fares again. We're also upgrading our software so that that could be moved over to the server. That's on a standalone PC right now. And we're getting training on that so that we can better report on, on ridership. The way it's set up right now is not making full use of what we can get out of our fare boxes. And I don't know the software, I'll have to do it myself, so we're going to get trained on it so we can set it up better, for better reporting. And we got our parts inventory completed. And everything's in the parts room now where it belongs and not in various buildings. Peace Avenue's been cleaned up, we did eight and a half dump trucks of garbage out of there. And 125 boxes of paper shredded and countless dozens and dozens of barrels of who knows what were taken out. So it is now being used to store vehicles like it's supposed to be. And DOT, last time we met, we, CT Transit was possibly going to handle facility maintenance for us. They came out, they looked, they said it's too much for them. So DOT is actually advertising right now for a facilities maintenance manager. Their plan is to kind of manage all the transit districts' facilities, but they're going to start with ours, knowing that we need it the most right now. And then DOT did do inspections of all of our facilities, part of our transit asset management program. And they hired an engineering firm to do that. And so we now have a list of items that we'll be working on with our, the new CT DOT facility manager. That's it for my report.
All right, let's go to, did you cover operations in that kind of already?
No, it's operations next, sorry. So I was going to let Jared do the operations.
Right.
Was me first?
I mean, I made it gender, it says operations, it doesn't matter.
So for operations, we've really been more focused towards customer service and kind of changing, you know, how things were done in the past. We've reevaluated the no-stop zones. This is allowing us to accommodate more riders. There's some zones set up that, you know, there was no reason we couldn't stop that. We also work with the drivers to use, you know, training to encourage people that if it's a dangerous area, where to stop, where we can pick them up and educate them so we can, you know, provide a better service. Um, we're, we're working with the drivers, a lot of drivers were doing running early, what you call running hot. So the supervisors worked with them to make them understand by running hot what exactly happens and how we don't provide the service needed by people missing buses and not getting to work and stuff like that. We put a procedure in place for when the buses are running late to call ahead for connection buses. And then it's certain time limit, we'll try to hold the bus so people can make their connections instead of them missing connections, being late for work or appointments.
So Jared, what would be the, the window, the?
It's, we do about five minutes is what we could do without the bus running really late.
Yeah.
Um, we had a lot of drivers who only knew the routes they drove. So when someone asked them a question about where I can get a bus and another bus, they didn't know it. So we've trained all the drivers to learn all the routes so they can give the proper information to the customers. It's just part of that whole more customer focus we're moving to. Um, we're planning on customer service training when it's safe to do so. We have some stuff in that, um, one of our supervisors is going to be teaching the course, so that'll be a lot better for us. Joe, next slide. We've done a lot of training. We've implemented on training programs. We are using the spin system training for the new drivers, which teaches them to drive a lot safer. We're doing customer service and start. We're also doing on-the-road spit system where they're driving before they pick people up, where they used to just go on a route and ride around. Now there's a lot of behind-the-scenes driving where we work on their skills and stuff like that. The supervisors are attending an online CTAA road supervisor training course. They were originally scheduled to go away, but that wasn't able to happen with COVID. We are becoming compliant and getting all employees trained on sexual harassment. That's something that we've never done before. Um, we.
Jared?
Yeah.
Are, where are you getting that training from?
Joe got the training through, I forget the name.
CHR.
Okay, good, 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 good.
And we, I took all the required training for the fuel tank and hazardous communications because we weren't in compliance with that either, we didn't have anybody on-site trained. Um, the road supervisor is now on the road 80% of the time instead of being in the offices and stuff. They're utilizing iPads and apps, you know, for driver evals, stop checks, terminal times. It rode up, they're on, they're on the buses doing observations. Um, their complaints are entered by dispatch into our GoCanvas app. And then they're assigned to a supervisor who resolves the complaints, reviews them with the driver, the employee involved, and closes the complaint out, and then Joe or I get it. So now we can track our complaints where before they were just written on paper and put in a file. So now we can look back, reference complaints, and, you know, kind of close the loop, something we weren't doing before to provide good service. Next. So these are our numbers for our routes. You can see the 2000, this is 220 and 2019. So, you know, we're down a little bit, but not as down as much like as you would think we would be.
Yeah.
I could tell you right now, the first week in September are some of the highest numbers we've seen, Joe and I were talking about. There's some days there's over 200 people taking one bus.
Any, any thing that you can attribute that to?
I think as more things open up, people are, you know, just getting more comfortable taking the bus. Remember for a while there, we were limited to the amount of people on the bus. And, you know, as those restrictions move, people are becoming more comfortable and going places. So I think it will steadily increase as we go on, hopefully with no issues. Any other slides, Joe?
Nope, that's it. All right, why don't we move on to finance report unless there's questions? All right, finance report?
Joey, start, what you was actual first, please? What just the actual, yeah? Doesn't open?
You want to see it or no?
What you was actual, no, it doesn't open. No, no, there you go, there you go. Just got to move a little bit. You got to move a little bit, make, yeah, so you can see bottom piece. I don't know if everybody see the, that total, okay, here you go. Thank you. We close the fiscal year. And I, like I always like to say, this is pre-ordered, our numbers. And there were maybe some kind of adjustments, but hopefully it's not a lot. So this is our total budget for all routes. In the bottom, you can see every single grant. So I just want to point out a few things. We pretty much stay in the budget, we like points, points four in the budget of a DOT. The most money, if you can see, we spent on maintenance, was Joe was pointing out before, maintenance on the buildings, repairs on the buildings, on the buses, and all the parts and everything we bought, we spent a lot more money that was budgeted. But we still in the budget, so that's pretty much, it's a good thing. The other thing I want to point out is that if you look at our, our revenue, you were $77,000 in the budget. So that, and they say, when you look in the bottom there, CARE Act, we draw $65,000 from CARE Act to compensate for all the lost per revenue. So we can still be with the budget. So as, as you can tell, we have a little surplus in the local money, $45,000, and plus $65,000, $100,000 maybe. Like I said, it's pre-ordered, we'll see how orders go with that. So we end up with surplus. So that, that, that's a good, good thing. So if you want to look at everything else, all the other stuff, all the, each one grants, it's all matched up for this one. So, so mostly was, mostly expenses was on the fixed routes. Because the mostly buses, the expense of the fix, it was buses, gels, the buses, it's diesel, it's, it's expensive. Plus a lot of stuff when a fixed route from the building, repairs and all the stuff. Other than that, like I said, we in the budget, so we'll see what will happen with order. But should I, in my opinion, there should not be a lot of changes, okay? So there any questions? The mainly was the, the maintenance, the maintenance and the buses in the buildings, that was the killer. So much money we spent on that, so.
And so, and so how do we adjust for the overage?
Well, and if you look at it there, we would end, we would still with the budget. What, what happens, we will still with the, with the budget that DOT given us and the town share. So we just some, and some stuff. Joe, can you put it back in the, in the total budget, please? So when you see there, we were off on some of them, but we were under on other stuff, so. So it's, it's begun by, this is the thing, how I explain to our board. It's when we set up the budget, our budget, the district budget, we set up, that's what we, we would like DOT give us. But then we waiting for DOT to give us actual money, either TOD, or as Joe said, we set up our budget in the May for this fiscal year, but TOD just came three weeks ago. So then you look at the line saying TOD, the deficit arts and deficit with DOT. So you look at what we get with DOT and what we get with us. If we have to work with DOT money, endlessly go over budget DOT, then becomes local money, town money. And we stay, but when you look at that, we stay 465 when, when budget, the budget was $512,000. It's a local money, so we got like $45,000 there.
Okay.
Some of it really from labor and fringes.
Yes.
Didn't have a mechanic.
When you look at that, yes.
Instead of contracted labor. And then.
Plus fuel, a lot of contribution with fuel, $86,000.
Fuel was much lower than expected.
Yeah.
And it's locked in for this year at, at a really low rate. And we were able to lock that in back in March when fuel was extremely low. We were able to lock in. And the, the final thing I was going to say was, oh, that we do have, we actually have a lot of capital money for doing large repairs. We just chose not to use it because we were under budget, that we didn't want. No, the capital money stays with us until we spend it all, and it can be repurposed. So if we say, you know what, we really don't need to do maintenance, we'll do it on some other item we need, we can do that. Whereas the operating money disappears at the end of the year, so.
Yeah, we don't spend.
First one to max, maximize our, our operating funding from ConDOT before we go touching capital. So we kind of, we waited to see, we had a few big bills, we said, oh, we could put this in capital if we need it. And in the end, we didn't, so we left it in operating.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So now, is there any questions? Then you can go to cash flow, Joe, please. Um, here's our cash flow, right now we have $124,000 in our accounts. It's in all three of them. This is estimated spending payable and receivable. And I just want to, it, it seems like we're doing okay, but you know, the cash flow, it can change from one day to other one. When you look at that account receivable, then I separate the DOT on us $30,000 from last fiscal year still receivables. And $23,000 on capital, so they still want us like $53,000 from last fiscal year, which is. And twenty-three thousand dollar on capital, so they still on us like fifty-three thousand from last fiscal year, which is not that much, it's, it's pretty good. We've been on, Joe been calling them and mailing them, so make sure they pay us, so, so we have a cash flow. Because as you see there in the red, we already borrowed five, two hundred fifty-five thousand dollar in line of credit. So, so when you look at here, what we have, we already billed the DOT for three hundred seventy-three thousand and fifty-four and twenty-eight. So money's coming in, it's just today received, we received TOD from them, they won't pay us. So we just received TOD three weeks ago, we already sent the bills to them. So I think Joe been contacting them and talking to them about when we get the payments. Because the minute we get the payments, we want to pay off line of credit. So that's the first one will be, so I'll pay down or pay, pay off if, if you get all the payments. And if you look at that in October, I lay a lot of payments received was in October. If one of those received was not coming in October, they move to November, then we may have an issue with cash flow. Because we already borrowed five hundred, two hundred fifty-five thousand. The other thing I want to point out, Joe, can you move a little up, please? Up, no, opposite. Up the, that way. So I can show the account receivable, okay? I just want to say, the other thing that we have, three towns, they haven't paid us for first quarter. And that will help us very much with our cash flow, sixty-four thousand seven eighty-eight. The Middletown hasn't paid us ADA, forty-three thousand, I believe, I have somewhere around forty-three thousand. And East Hampton, it's very little, it's like three grand. And Portland hasn't paid us nothing either. So we have to, I don't know who can talk to them, with Joe or somebody, gotta make sure to contact them and ask them if they can pay us the, the money. Because they, we provide services now almost one and a half months, we haven't received no payments.
Yeah, I, I, I could speak about Middletown, yeah. I think there was some confusion as to where the, the person that took over for the finances within the mayor's office, who typically receives those bills, hadn't processed one of those before, so he was curious as to what.
Yeah, and that.
We were able, we were able to work that out with him, so he, he should be, I'll make sure.
Great, and we, well, we have another one on the way, so.
Yes, and we have October due, yeah, October due eighty-two thousand dollar. And that's another eighty-two thousand, it's Middletown seventy-four, seven, almost seventy-five thousand dollar due for next quarter. And Portland and East Hampton, which is they haven't paid us, Portland paid us that one there. No, they haven't, Portland hasn't paid us nothing, and they have another one for second quarter due on October first. So, yeah, so I don't know who will talk, but that will help. Because we, we have payroll, we have to pay, we have to pay fuel, we have to pay all the stuff. So we have obligation to pay, we can hold on some others bills, but not on those one. So, and like I said, on October, should we receive, on the beginning of October, that'd be great if we receive all this DOT money. That we, we should be in a, in a good shape. If we don't receive that, then we will come back to board and we'll see, maybe put pressure on the town to pay us, or I don't know, we'll see. That's more joke answer, so. So that, that, other than that, it looks, it looks okay. So we've been flowing through, so we've been having enough money to pay our all bills, okay? Is there any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, moving on to item number six, new business fares, Joe?
Okay, so our plan is to resume fares on November first. We are.
Joe, is that, well, is that consistent with everyone around the state?
So CT Transit is doing October fifth. And we're waiting a little longer because our final driver barriers are scheduled to be installed on October twelfth. And we don't want anyone up at the front of the bus until we have barriers on every bus. So, and DOT is fine with that. They, when they set October fifth, they said, October fifth, if you have barriers in every bus, so. So, yeah, many transit districts are a little behind the October fifteenth. So we've been ordering new fare media, getting ready for the terminal, to start selling tickets again. And we also are preparing to do a mobile ticketing. You can see, we've got that nine town as well. Help trying, have a little less cash coming in by letting people just attach a credit card in their app, and they could just buy their fares right in the app. And one of the things I sent out to you the other day was the proposal to add a five-day pass that consistent with CT Transit. Because the way the mobile ticketing works is, it's, it gives you, it's called, what's called fare capping, where you can pay one ride at a time, you know, your dollar seventy-five, and it automatically caps the fare at the next best value. So, for instance, our day pass here is four fifty. So if you ride enough times in a day that you hit the day pass value, you get a text message saying you've been upgraded to a, upgraded to a day pass. And so if we add a five-day pass, the next step would be, once you get to the fourteen dollars, you get upgraded to a five-day pass automatically. And so on, so forth, they hit thirty-one day pass. It allows people to buy a pass a little at a time, instead of coming up with fifty bucks at, at once.
I like that.
Which either you don't have it, you know, a lot of people don't, or maybe you just don't know if you're going to ride that much this month, you know? And, and, and when you, especially if, for many of our people who are a little lower income, if they're not sure that they're going to be riding every day for a month, they're, I would be hesitant too to spend that fifty bucks upfront rather than just pay a little bit at a time. So this allows you to always get the best deal possible. You can still go ahead and buy a thirty-one day pass, if that's what you want to do, you can buy a ten-ride pass. But it gives you lots of options, and like I said, make sure that you're always getting that best deal possible. So I had sent you the five-day pass, which is good, it's fourteen dollars. So if we want to do that, we would just, you know, motion on, on that to approve that.
Is there going to be literature for, for them to know about this, the mobile ticketing?
Yes, so the company actually does provide a whole bunch of marketing materials. We, we just signed the, the deal with them the other day. So I'm waiting for that, they'll provide all that, they know our, our launch date is mid-October. Because I want to have it launched, so people will start buying passes before the first, and start playing with it, downloading it, you know, getting to know it. And we get all our drivers trained on it. And I'm also working on, at Nine Town, I'm working with a marketing firm to create some literature. And so once that's done for there, I'll just have them modify it a little bit for Middletown. So we can have some things to put up in the vehicles. We'll do email campaign, social media. I just want to show you the email that went out today to let customers know that fare collection's starting. We're, so we're putting that on social media right now. Changing our website, and we're going to make flyers for the buses too.
So, would it be compatible to be on the app or no?
Which thing is that?
The app, the, or the.
Oh, the, our ABL app, you mean?
Yeah.
No, I'm going, I will, it, so the reason we chose, the company we chose was because they do integrate with a lot. But we are still the only customer of the ABL company. And I, when I talk to them, I get the sense that they're not developing that product anymore, because after three years, we are still the only customer. So I don't see any development going into it at all.
So are we still going to keep it then?
Until we have another option. And, you know, depending on what happens with our, with this negotiation, the MOA with the state and all, plan is, you know, should we go that direction? Of course, we'd want to have the same app for the whole region. And the one that Nine Town uses is used by a lot of places, it's, they have many customers. So we can go that direction, it would actually be really easy to do that. And we could use the equipment that's already in the buses to get started with that. That could happen really quickly.
Do you need a motion?
So I need a motion on the five-day pass, yep, and see up there highlights for fourteen dollars.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Ed, thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor? I'm sorry, go ahead, Beverly.
So the five-day pass, it replaces the ten, ten rides?
It's just an addition, it's not a replacement at all. We still keep everything we always had, and just add in the five. So, so the fare capping only works for time-based passes, not like a ten-ride. So, you know, it doesn't work in terms, like, you can't go ten times and then you get to upgrade to a ten-ride. It only works for time-based stuff, so that's why I want to kind of put in. So a five-day pass is kind of like a ten-ride pass, right? Because a ten-ride pass, ten rides come from, that's basically what you would use in a work week. So if we, if we go to a five-day pass, it gives you unlimited rides for a week, basically, for a work.
Okay, alright.
Instead of.
It's cheaper.
And it's actually cheaper too. I use the, this is the CT Transit price that I used here, so.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, let's be consistent with CT Transit.
I mean, yeah, I mean, would it not make sense then to look at eliminating the ten-ride pass?
You know, some people like the ten-ride because you don't have to use over a certain period of time. So you might use ten rides in the whole month.
Yeah, exactly.
You know? And it still works in the app, the app, the way it works for a ten-ride is that it tells you what your next ride will be. So, you know, it'll say, tap to use your sixth ride. And then we set the time limit for how long that's good for.
Okay.
So as soon as they tap it, you know, right now our transfers are good for an hour. So we could say, as soon as they tap it, that pass will be good for an hour. So you can leave the app, close it out, if you open it back up within, you know, fifty-eight minutes, you can pull that pass back up again and show it again. Without using your next, you know, your next ride.
Yeah, so on the five, on the five-day pass, it wouldn't matter if you ran, ran over, you could.
And the five-day pass is totally time-based. So you could ride thirty times within your five days. You know, so that's really designed for, I'm going to go a lot in a week, or I just ride a lot in a week at one seventy-five each time, and I eventually get upgraded to a five-day pass. Usually by the, the day four, you'll hit the fourteen-day pass if you're riding. If you're riding twice a day, that's three fifty a day. On your fourth day, you're at fourteen dollars. So day five is free.
Yeah, okay.
And you don't have to use transfers for.
No, because that, you just pull that ticket up again. So instead of a transfer, so that's where, that's another reason why this is a great time to do it, because it's just a flash pass. There's no transfer, no handing paper back and forth, you know, no money back and forth, just flash that pass as you drive, walk by the driver, and they see it's valid. So right, instead of a transfer, we're just going to make it good for an hour. Or good, I'll probably make it a little longer than that. What I did at Nine Town is I made it good for two hours. So there'd be no need for a transfer ever, and that matches CT Transit's length of time that they're good for. So instead of a transfer, right, you just pull up that pass again. When you go on the, the next bus, you just pull up your pass again instead of a transfer.
Okay, and so, and that's when all this, you're saying that, but the data in the ridership, this will be for a program that counts the, the rides?
Well, it's actually, so this is different than GFI, but what we'll do is, then why we need the training is we can make a button on our fare box, the drivers hit every time they see a mobile pass. So it'll still be registered in our fare box, so it's all in one place. But the fare box won't actually be reading it, the driver will just see it and they can hit a button.
Oh, okay, so they still have to hit that button?
They do for free, you know, just like they do when a kid gets on, free, they hit that free button. We just got to program a button to be mobile tickets. Because we'll want to know, even though we'll, we'll get the data broken down by each type of fare in token transit, you know, what was bought and what was used.
Yeah, yeah.
But, but it won't know what route it was used on.
That's true too, yeah, exactly.
But the fare box will.
Oh, okay.
So, now the driver won't know, was that a one-ride, was that a ten-ride, was that a five-day? They'll have no idea, they'll just know it's a mobile ticket. But like I said, we'll get that written down of, of what we're selling out of token transit.
Okay, that sounds good. We're going, we're getting, getting to now.
I think people will like it a lot, people that, that use it. And, and like I said, I love the fare capping, I think that's just a great thing. To make these better value passes available to more people.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
All right, so we have a motion and a second, is there any other discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
A opposed? Matter passes unanimously. All right, moving on to old business, seven A, regional bus study.
Right, so we received public comments over the summer on the final service proposals. We did a live Zoom meeting and Facebook Live at the same time. And, and then in the Middletown area, we had it run on public access. In Durham, it was live run, but the Middletown one couldn't, wasn't able to do that. So they ran it after, I think three times they ran it. And we had flyers up on all the buses, letting people know when it was all going to be, and when they could watch it on TV, if they couldn't do it on Zoom or Facebook. We then accepted comments, we had an online survey, we had a text messaging set up, and we had a voicemail line set up, so that people could contact us in many, many different ways, so we can get the information from them. Despite all that, we still only got forty-one responses, which I was not happy with. I mean, unfortunately, it's kind of, I figured it was not going to be as creative responses as we hoped, because it couldn't do the in-person. But I, I think that, I think we did a lot of creative things, but it still didn't reach everyone we needed to reach. So what we told the consultant was, you know, the first survey that was done, when they were able to come to the terminal, before we have, you know, proposals or anything, just getting people's feedback of what they wanted to see, we had a really good response rate. So what we're going to do is kind of combine the responses from the two, so we kind of know where people, what people want to see. But from these forty-one responses, you could see what their responses were in terms of improving service, existing service. Pretty much, overwhelmingly, it was improved weeknight and Saturday daytime service. Their, you know, Sundays was, you know, not even quite fifty percent as a top choice, or top two. And Saturday evenings was probably the least popular. So, kind of, you know, a little surprising there. The next thing was system-wide changes. Again, the strongest, the most favorable responses were, one of them surprisingly was to increase frequency on key bus routes, to be every twenty-five to thirty minutes. I'm not sure people fully understand, understood that that would mean that they wouldn't connect with other buses. So while the, the commercial areas might get twice as frequent service, you might not be able to get to the more frequent one, where you make it suck downtown for thirty minutes, waiting for the next bus. And the straighter, more direct routes was favorable. So it looks like that is one that will work, that one's, that one's free. So that's something we'll probably, will end up implementing, or at least, you know, getting the next step, which is proposing to actually do it. The rest, we're kind of all over the place, but those are the two most popular things in the system-wide changes. And the next steps are going to be that, as I said, they're going to kind of take the comments received in those, that first comment period, where we were able to do in-person on the bus, at the terminal, at Walmart, you know, questionnaires. where we were able to do in-person, on the bus, at the terminal, at Walmart, you know, questionnaires, combine it with what we got after, and make some final summary of the recommendations and, and then they will prepare a final report of service recommendations. Material that will then be able to use if we choose to do it for a public hearing. It will have numbers of cost estimates and all that, so we could submit proposals to DOT to fund it, the ones that need funding. And, and like I said, packages, so we're ready to present them to the public. And then in terms of the governance piece of the study, I'll just talk the overview here, because we do have room for executive session if we need it later for any real details. But the next steps is that yesterday, we're still waiting on ConDOT to, to pay for things that they owe for, what, almost a year and a half now, before they're willing to move any further, because, you know, obviously they're concerned of DOT's ability to, to provide funding if they can't make good on past promises. I was given verbal approval to add a maintenance director that will be shared between the two agencies. They had me, they first gave me verbal approval of, like, two months ago. And then last week told me to write a proposal, which I did, with a job description and everything. And they called me and said they were approving it, and they were adding it to our, to the TOD. The way I worried was really that, really regardless of what happens, it makes sense for us to share a maintenance director between the two agencies. Because neither agency is really large enough to have a maintenance director, and especially not one that they could pay well enough. So no matter what way things end on the governance piece, sharing somebody to oversee maintenance, I think makes a lot of sense and lets us get a better, a more qualified person and have a better maintenance program in the end.
So do we need to have a, a bridge MOU until such time that we formally combine? For that?
Yeah, it'd probably be a good idea to have something, yeah, we could have in place just for that specific position, anything else we wanna kinda do in the interim.
I guess my question, Joe, would be, you know, would the, what organization would the person be an employee of and receiving benefits from?
Yeah, so the plan is to, to do it under Estuary, because in the end, that's where the study puts everybody. So rather than hire them one and then move them. And the other reason honestly is that, is the Estuary benefit package will attract better candidates. We, we had that issue in the past when trying to hire maintenance staff here in Middletown. The benefits became the issue in the end.
What ramifications would we potentially see? And maybe we don't wanna have this in open discussion, but I would assume that the maintenance manager or director here for Middletown Air and Transit was union?
No, no, nobody maintains as union, but certainly not this level position wouldn't be anyway. This is, this is gonna be a direct, you know.
Okay, that was my concern.
But no, none of, even maintenance, like a mechanic is not union here, it's only bus drivers. Even our service worker, like our, our fueler, is not covered in a union.
Okay, so that resolves that.
Yep.
That sounds like a great idea, Joe. You know, from a, from a small-town perspective, how we, you know, Durham and Middlefield have done many things together, try to share. And sometimes that's what you gotta do to get the, get the person you need in the job, and you're too small to, we're too, just too small to do things alone, so that's the way it is.
Yeah, and if DOT is gonna fund it a hundred percent, then, you know, great. It's all new money, and that means that we could take the funding that we have here, the budget for a ma, a maintenance, you know, for mechanic, and hire a mechanic, possibly two. And we don't have to, you know, so we could hire a different type of mechanic than we had to hire before, because we'll have a maintenance director in place that could actually manage them and oversee them, and they don't have to be somebody who can manage themselves very well. And that was really the challenge before, was getting a mechanic who wasn't only a good mechanic, but really good at managing their own work and, and all that stuff, and, and computer skills and all those things. I mean, not to say that a mechanic nowadays doesn't need strong computer skills, of course they do, but.
Yeah, so the labor pool increases your availability.
Absolutely, yeah. I think we'll have a much easier time getting mechanic in and actually starting to use our shop some. I mean, we're still limited to as much we could use a shop, because it's still a small shop with one lift, but I'd like to start getting a lot, start doing a lot of work, our, at least routine work, preventative maintenance, stuff like that. Tire stuff ourselves and not having to do everything contracted.
Um, Mr. Chair, would a motion be in order to authorize Joe to prepare an MOU to present to Nine Town Board for the purpose of hiring a joint maintenance director?
I believe that would be a need, and I, I would also add to that, that we have it reviewed by our legal counsel, John Shapiro, just to make sure that, you know, we're safeguarding the district with regards to that MOU.
And I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, thank you.
Uh, next old business item was on COVID. A lot of stuff we're still dealing. One thing that's changed is we have a nice stockpile now of PPE and cleaning items, which was hard to get in the beginning. Our file barriers, as I said earlier, will be installed October 12th. And we're planning a terminal reopening for pass sales only, to start with, because we're still gonna be one of the only things open, and we know the minute we open, we'll become a hangout spot again for people who are not customers, which then poses a risk to our customers. So, you know, we wanna just kinda have in terminal who needs to be in the terminal. And we'll reevaluate and see how that goes and, and as it cold.
And I, I think it, it needs to be a requirement that people wear masks regardless if they're not wearing it on the bus, but there should be a requirement in the terminal that they wear masks.
We are going to, we, we are going to require that because there, unlike on the bus, there are other options if they can't wear a mask for buying tickets. You know, we can walk one out to them, they don't have to be in there if they don't need, they don't wanna wear a mask, or can't wear a mask, I should say, because of medical reasons. And again, we're gonna keep the, the porta potty out there, because again, we know as soon as we open those restrooms, that's gonna become a gathering spot. And we had a free mask day back in July, it was state, I don't know, every transit system did it. We gave out, out about fifty, and the state is planning one again on nine fifteen and ten-five. They were supposed to be sending out marketing material, which I have not seen yet, and of course, that's already next week. But it's no surprise there. But we'll, we'll give out masks, they're cloth masks that we gave out last time, and we'll do that again on the fifteenth and the fifth. And even in between, we give out surgical masks. When we see customers not, that don't have a mask out, the terminal or security guard will offer them one. And a lot of them did end up taking them. And then our other old business item that hopefully will be able to come off for next time is our nineteen audit findings, our parts inventory is complete. And we just now have to enter it into our maintenance software, get that all up to date, but we do have one to provide the auditors. And we did not have any letters from ConDOT about late billings this year, so that should not be a finding either. And that's it for old business.
Well, great job on the audit findings and, you know, not getting any notices from ConDOT. So, and all in all, I, I think you guys have been doing great during the COVID-nineteen crisis. Keep up the good work, please. I, I think on behalf of the board, relay that to the staff as well.
Well, because, yeah, they're the ones that really out there every day.
Right, and so, you know, they've been doing a fantastic job, and so again, please relay that to the staff.
And the drivers, and the drivers.
Yeah, that's what I meant.
Okay.
They're the ones out there every day with the public.
I don't care about the ones that are in the office behind closed doors. Anyways, uh, thank you for that. Moving on to item eight, a executive session, negotiation of contract with Connecticut DOT. We will need a motion to go into executive session, and in that motion, if someone will, I assume we're gonna want our counsel in that as well. So we'll just need to name the counsel as a member of that executive session.
Yeah, so I'll make a motion to go in an executive session along with the board members and, and our, our counsel, Jonathan Shapiro.
And I believe Joe Comfor as well, correct?
Yes.
A second.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, we are now in exec, then motion to formally come out of executive session.
We're back recorded.
All right, is there a motion to come out of the executive session regarding negotiation of contract with ConDOT?
Still moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. All right, moving on to item number nine, next meeting, October eighth, twenty-twenty at three PM. We don't need a motion or anything on that, it's just for reference. And then the last thing on the agenda is adjournment. Do I have a motion to?
Still moved.
Don't rush, guys, don't rush. Excellent. All right, well, thank you very much, everyone. Laura, if you have a few minutes, and Joe, if you have a few minutes, we could hang around.
Okay.
All right, take care, everyone else.
Wait, wait, if, are, are we gonna talk about the committee, or are we gonna talk about the trolley?
I was thinking trolley, but.
Oh, then, then can Ed stay on?
Sure, of course.